Good evening and welcome to the mayoral and city council forum for the city of Maplewood. My name is Linda McLune and I am a member of the Roseville Area League of Women Voters and a resident of Roseville. I am a moderator for this evening’s Meet the Candidates forum. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to welcome all of you tonight, the candidates who joined us here in Maplewood City Hall, and those who are out here in the live audience, as well as those viewing the forum on the Comcast Cable Channel 16. The League is a nonpartisan volunteer political organization for both women and men, organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage informed and active participation in government. This forum is part of our ongoing voter education efforts to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming elections. This allows you an opportunity to hear candidates face-to-face discuss issues that are important to you. There is never enough time in a forum such as this to cover all the issues. If your questions are not addressed, or you just have additional questions that occur to you as you listen tonight, we encourage you to contact the candidates directly. We hope that over the course of this program, you will learn about the candidates and what they hope to do if elected to serve as mayor and on the city council. While the League never endorses a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues to keep our community strong. And if you are interested in learning how to make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League’s information available here tonight, or visit the League of Women Voters website at www.lwvmn.org. Blatant advertising for the League, sorry. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters, and sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement by the League of any candidate. All candidates who filed for this office were invited to this forum. The other mayoral candidate was unable to attend. I will read as best I can her opening and closing statements, and they look a little long, and I will do my best, but when my time is cut off, I will end, so I apologize in advance. Again, I want to remind the candidates that this forum is being broadcast in its entirety live and will be rebroadcast in its entirety, and please check again Comcast Cable Channel 16 for airing times. It’s also going out on the city web portal and on the city’s Facebook portal, so how modern is that? So this year, the citizens of Maplewood are electing a mayor and two city council members, and we have our city council candidates here tonight and one of the two mayoral candidates. We’ll use questions written by the audience at today’s forum. They are submitted to League volunteers throughout the forum, so if something occurs to you, just hold your card up like this, and some wonderful person with a League button will come over and slowly bring it up to me. Again, answers to the question need to focus on the questions themselves. A candidate’s record, of course, can be discussed, but personal attacks won’t be tolerated. We ask the audience to hold all applause until the very end of the forum this evening, even though I know you’re going to applaud every single time, but we’re going to just hold off. So now, we’re going to introduce the candidates for mayor, and then I will introduce the candidates for city council for the city of Maplewood. There are two candidates for mayor and four candidates for the city council position. So the first candidate is Margaret Behrens, the second candidate is Nora Slawick, who is with us tonight, and then for city council, we have Mary Lee Abrams, Kevin Burgland, Kathleen Juniman, and Nikki Villa Visencio. So the agenda for tonight will be as follows. All candidates will have two minutes for an opening statement, and the timekeeper is sitting in the front row. Say hi, timekeeper. And when there are 30 seconds left, she will hold up this fabulous yellow card that says, yellow, “30 seconds left.” Then, when your time is done, she’ll hold up the red stop. Nice color coordination there. We ask that, certainly you can finish your sentence, but we do ask you not to then continue on, and I will keep interrupting you, and it’s not good. And this is just to be fair to every candidate, so that everybody gets the same amount of time. I’ll then start by asking questions from these wonderful piles of cards that I have sitting up here with me. Two minutes are allowed per response, and we’ll start in kind of rotating order, and then partway through, I’ll just switch the direction, just for the fun of it. I think it’s good not to always follow the same people, so it makes life interesting. At the end of the question period, we will have two minutes again for closing statements in reverse order of our starting statements. So I think we’re all ready. Then, we are ready to begin with our opening statements, and again, you have two minutes for each response. We will start our opening statements, because it’s better to start with somebody who’s here and living here with us. So the first of the two mayoral candidates, Nora Slawick, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum, and thanks to the people who are in the audience, and for those who are at home tuning in. My name’s Nora Slawick, and I am the current mayor of Maplewood, and I’m running for reelection. I have lived in Maplewood for over 24 years, first in South Maplewood for 20 years, and now in the Gladstone area. My husband, Mark, who is here tonight, and I have four children between us, and we love living in Maplewood in our wonderful neighborhood near the many parks and trails. For the past five years, I’ve been honored to serve as your mayor. I want to keep working to make Maplewood the best place to live, to work, and to play. I have listened to and learned from our residents about the strengths and ways to improve Maplewood over the past several years. In the next four years, I will focus on what people really want from city government: responsiveness, integrity, a safe place to call home. My priorities include: strengthen public safety through strategic policing, fire, and emergency medical services; continue to improve our streets, right? We know we need that. I know this is very important to many of you; and transit access, including the Gold Line 3M BRT station; deepen our focus on economic development with special attention to re-envisioning the Maplewood Mall, St. John’s, and Gladstone areas; and protecting our environment, parks, and outdoor spaces. Along with the council, we have restored public trust in the city, and we want to continue to make Maplewood a great place to live. And no one does this alone. Many of you have helped and expressed your opinions over the last five years, and I am grateful for that, and together, we can move Maplewood forward successfully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The second candidate for mayor is Margaret Behrens, and I will be reading her opening statement. Good evening. Thank you for coming to the League of Women Voters forum, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for your invitation to participate. I am submitting a written statement as I’m out of town and unavailable to participate this evening. My travel plans were made long before I decided to campaign for mayor of our city, and my plans were non-refundable. I’ll provide you with the statement and much more on my campaign website at margaretbehrensformapplewoodmayor.com, and at the Facebook page, Margaret Behrens for Maplewood Mayor. Please check those out for further details. For tonight’s purpose, the message is simple. The state of our city tells the truth. There is no propaganda that can dispute the declining state of our city. I have lived in Maplewood for 55 years. I have deep roots in our community. I have seen our city at its best and its worst. I have never seen our city in such a steep decline as I do now. My husband and I have been married 36 years and grew up one block from each other in the same Maplewood neighborhood. We live on the property my husband grew up on. We have raised our family here, and our grandchildren have lived here. My husband has retired from 3M, where he was a 42-year employee until his department was outsourced out of our country, and he was forced into early retirement. I’ve worked and volunteered and served in an elected office of the state and represented our city of Maplewood. I have served three, four-year terms, elected to the Minnesota State Office of the Ramsey Conservation District. In my first year elected to the Board of Supervisors, I worked and succeeded in getting the Conservation District out of the red and into the black for the first time in its 30-year history. I have been there ever since. This experience, working to protect our water, will be of great value as we work to resolve the contamination by 3M of our and surrounding cities’ drinking water. Through my creative leadership, I have turned community outreach and education into a demand program. The well sealing program has had very little activity, has boosted incredibly when I took over. Now, the program is extremely successful and has a long waiting list to participate. I’m excited to be able to bring my business management experience to recover the city, and unfortunately, there’s three more pages, but my time is out. So I would advise you to check her webpage. So now, we are ready to hear opening statements from our individuals who are running for city council, and we will start with Kathleen Juniman.
Thank you, Linda, and my thanks to the League. You’ve been at this a long time, so you do know how to run one of these, might I say. I am, as she said, Kathleen Juniman. I’m an incumbent council member seeking reelection. My history is long. I was raised in the Beaver Lake East County Line neighborhood, and my husband Greg and I have lived in the Parkside neighborhood for 43 years. As a former high school teacher, advocate for seniors, longtime community activist for 21 years, and current council member, I bring a broad knowledge base, historic perspective, and a wealth of experience. During my history on councils, constituents have described me as thorough, knowledgeable, trustworthy, and dedicated. I am known for my strength, perseverance, and creative solutions if we’re at an impasse. I consider it my responsibility to be a well-informed policymaker, resident advocate, and strong city representative. Many great things are happening in our city right now: the redevelopment in Gladstone, the new office at Health East Specialty Center, and the residential rental Conifer Ridge near St. John’s Hospital in the mall; the redevelopment of Wakefield Park as a destination park; the renovation of our nature center; participation in the Rice Larpenter revitalization planning process with two other cities; transition to a full-time fire and EMS service; ongoing planning for the implementation of the Rush Line, bringing a whole new transportation mode to us; initiating the north-end market study to help guide the future of the Maplewood Mall and St. John’s Hospital area. Environmentally, we are a Step Five Green Step City, one of six in the state, and we are known regionally for our energy conservation, environment protection, and urban agriculture, and there’s much more. But even with that, there remains a lot to do.
Thank you. So, opening statement, Mary Lee Abrams.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to the residents who came out here tonight to hear us all in person, and thank you to all the people that are watching at home as well. My name is Mary Lee Abrams, and I have the honor and the privilege of serving right now as a Maplewood City Council member. It’s a little awkward, I’m sitting in the mayor’s seat right now. Generally, I sit right over here, but tonight, we’re all here as candidates, and this is a wonderful opportunity, as part of our democracy, to listen to what the candidates have to say. I have been very pleased to live in Maplewood for approximately 23 years. I raised my two sons in this city. They went to District 622. I’ve been very active in my community, and I have had, as I said, the privilege of serving one term on the Maplewood City Council. My work is not done yet. I think Maplewood right now is at a very good point. We’re headed in the right direction, and I’m excited to see what comes next. It’s also a very crucial point for Maplewood, because my first three priorities really focus on the future of Maplewood. Right now, all of you know that Sears has closed over at the Maplewood Mall, and there’s some other stores that have closed over there as well. That’s a very important asset to our city, and one of my priorities is to help the city, help the mall, revision what that mall should be used for. Retail has changed, thanks to Amazon and to online shopping, and all malls across the country are facing this very same kind of issue. We need to be creative, we need to be nimble, and we need to be prepared for what’s next at the Maplewood Mall. My second priority is really to help our public safety and EMS folks. Right now, we’re considering on the council adding two additional police officers, and I’m 100% in support of that. And my third priority is to focus on transportation. The east end of town has been overlooked in terms of transportation, and I want to be on the council to help make that work for all of the residents and the businesses on the east side. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, opening statement, again, city council candidate, Kevin Burgland.
Thank you, Linda. Mary Abrams, I thought I was sitting in the mayor’s seat, and you were sitting in the city attorney’s seat.
No.
Well, my chief motivation for running for Maplewood Council is to bring positivity back. The city of Maplewood’s administration and its council is heading in a more and more negative direction. One of my first things I can do to bring it into positivity is actually to cast a vote for a mayor who doesn’t have a negative bone in her body, the challenger candidate, and actually lives in the city. The city is not welcoming to residents. Residents are uneasy about crime, unsure about education, and don’t trust their negative city government and its administration. Also, Maplewood has not been a good neighbor to our neighboring cities. As a result of my city, the city council, they’ve made poor policy self-centered decisions. Up at city hall, because of internal issues in the fire department, with poor morale, with my city suing our own part-time firefighter relief association fund, and a power play money grab, and sending fire ladder trucks to medical calls, Maplewood doesn’t have the focus and resources to properly cover Maplewood residents’ EMS calls for service. More negative leadership. But instead, we overuse and abuse the mutual aid agreement with neighboring cities to cover fire department calls. Take another negativity of Maplewood and our unneighborly in the city polling.
Oh, I’m sorry. I’m sorry. Stop, 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 stop. Time is up.
Oh, and I apologize.
Sorry. That’s okay. That’s fine.
I thought we could finish our sentence.
You had, nope. Well, you’ve been talking over your red sign, so, sorry. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
You will have time to bring back those issues for your closing statements and during the questioning.
Thank you.
So now, city council candidate, Nikki Villa Visencio.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nikki Villa Visencio, and I’d like to start out by telling you a little bit about myself and why I’m running for Maplewood City Council. I’ve lived in Maplewood for over six years. My partner Darrell and I are renters, and we raise our daughter here. I grew up in Wisconsin. Growing up with family close by was a privilege in many ways, but I always envisioned a community that was free of barriers I faced as a person with a disability. As a young person, I attended the University of Wisconsin-Watewater and studied broadcast journalism. My college experience gave me the ability to be independent. I set off on a journey. I took a Greyhound bus from Wisconsin to Las Vegas all by myself. My adventure soon brought me to see that the privileges we have here in the Midwest for housing and services for people with disabilities are far better. Well, that was prior to Governor Walker anyways. I set off, or, my uncle in Minnesota had offered me to move in with him and his family. I was able to gain independence and find my first apartment in St. Paul. My aunt provided me the opportunity for the independence as acting as my personal care attendant for four years, and two of those years, she cared for my partner as well. I explored what my purpose is to my new community. I interned at Gillette Lifetime Clinic, where I first introduced, I was introduced to policy that affects real people. I developed an advocacy training for Gillette consumers. If we want policy that works for people’s lives, we must elect the people who will fight for those policies. So I volunteered for many DFL candidates. I worked in Obama’s Voter Outreach Program to expand the vote through the Minnesota Secretary of State. Much of my organizing success has been collaborating with organized labor. I’ve been on the bargaining team that bargained a contract for Minnesota’s largest union, SEIU. Because of my work, I’m endorsed by the Maplewood DFL and Labor. We moved to Maplewood when I was seven months pregnant, still envisioning a community that was free of barriers, but now, my vision was for my family.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Two minutes, I know, always seems like it should be longer than that, so I apologize. So I just want to remind everybody that we need to, you know, issues and voting records are fair game, but we need to be careful about personal attacks, and that is very important. Okay, so, because the issues are the issues, and it’s good to get your point across that way. So we will, I’m going to start with kind of a vision question, all right? And we’re going to start with Kathleen Juniman, and we’re going to work around in the same order that we just were. So if you received a million-dollar grant for use in the city any way you wanted, so you’re queen or king, right, you know, what would you do with it and why? And with that, we’re going to start with city council candidate Kathleen Juniman.
One of the first things I think we would do is apply some of that money to our park system, because we have a park master plan that we’re trying to work forward on, and it’s slow-going when you don’t have sufficient funding. So that’s a very strong priority. Also, in public safety, as Mary Lee intimated, we have been requested to have two additional police officers. I feel that’s a very high priority, and we need to do whatever they ask us for. Having them up to speed and having enough people and enough of the correct equipment is extremely important. Excuse me. I also think we would want to spend some of the money on the planning that’s going on at the north end, we’re now calling the north end, up by the mall and St. John’s Hospital. And whenever you have a vision plan, it takes more money than you think to finish the plan, for starters, and then to get it staged, so you can actually start moving. A plan on a shelf doesn’t do anybody any good. So we would love to have some extra money to do with that with. I also think we probably would want to put some more into affordable housing. While we have a fair amount in our eyes, if you look across the metropolitan area, every city needs more affordable housing, and we do as well. So you need to do appropriate planning, look at the areas, thanks to the new transportation, that will be available, and put some energy into incenting, incenting developers to come and look at us and see what they can offer us. I think if we do those things, the million dollars will be gone.
Thank you. Again, the question is, if you received a million-dollar grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, as queen, what would you do with it and why? And next will be our city council candidate, Mary Lee Abrams.
What a wonderful dilemma. You know, I often sit up here at the Council Diaz and really struggle with some of the hard issues, because we certainly want to ensure that we have excellent service in our city, but we also have to be fiscally responsible. And I view this as a gift of a million dollars. I certainly hope that one day that might happen, that some benefactor would give the city a million dollars, and we would get a chance to spend it. So I view this as a question having to do with new money, something that really wasn’t anticipated. And I really would focus on two areas, because in looking at new money, this is something that we have designed for, but we don’t have all of the funding in place right now for. So I would look at splitting this. I would put $500,000 into our parks and trails. We did a survey on livability here in Maplewood, and generally, about 75% of our residents are either very, are happy with the livability here in Maplewood. They find it either good or excellent. And one of the reasons is our parks and trails. It really goes to a quality-of-life kind of a question, and I would pick out those parks that are on the horizon for us to work on and to upgrade, and I would put $500,000 into parks and trails. The other $500,000, I would put into our roads. One of the frustrations that I think any council has across the metro area is the status of our roads. We have a lot of roads that need to be fixed. We’ve got great staff that are out there, and they actually grade all of our roads, and we address the worst roads first. Now, as a council member, I voted in favor of a franchise fee to help our roads, but I would take $500,000, and I would put it into another big road project to fix our roads.
Thank you very much. So our next city council candidate, Kevin Burgland, if you received a million-dollar grant to use for the city in any way you wanted, what would you do with it and why?
Thank you. Enough of this me, 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 me arrogance shown by our current incumbents. I’m more of the Bernie Sanders grassroots democracies, and do not want to be king or some sort of fascist dictator. I’m interested in removing the negativity which has surrounded this administration and its council. Where they, the first thing they would need to do is we want to return them to the need to be accountable. We first need to return to being a good neighbor in our region, which is, which I think from all our neighboring cities, including North St. Paul, White Bear Lake, Van Ness Heights, were looked at as a complete piranha, an embarrassment and negative. Second of all, we have to bring public impact back to the current council. It’s a community standard. It had a long, we had in Maplewood, a long history of residential input. When the current leadership took over, they cut it out. Secondly, we need to bring back the citizens’ mayor’s forum, another community standard for 25 years. Another thing, the negative leadership cut out, and they, instead, they went to twittering, which NPR calls a cesspool. Next, we need to bring back community access cable, again, a community standard over 25 years, shut down by the current negative leadership. All I know is that we need to sit back and bring positivity back, respect and welcoming to the citizens, and we got to get rid of this negative attitude that is exhibited meeting after meeting from the current administration and the leadership.
Thank you. So our next city council candidate, Nikki Villa Visencio. Did I say that right? I said that wrong. I know I did. Villa Visencio. Anyway, so if you received a million-dollar grant to the city, what would you do with it and why?
Well, you know, I, first, I think a million dollars nowadays really doesn’t get you very far nowadays. So, I mean, I think we still need to really think very hard about that million dollars. The first thing I would want to do is engage Maplewood residents in meaningful ways and see what they care about, and the first group of people that I would go to is the senior community. I think seniors nowadays are pictured as these vulnerable adults that are not able to do anything for themselves, and I think that seniors are a pillar of wisdom that we need to tap into to make our community better, along with the progressive ideas that we are building now. Obviously, as a Parks and Recs Commissioner since 2014, I would love to put money towards parks, but you know what? I think we’ve been doing a really good job at working on the parks, and I would say that the trails and working with our regional, our regional levels of government, I think that the, if we do, if we make sure that, when we make trails and we make parks and we make them connected to everything and have a livable community. So the bus system needs to go to the trails, and the trails need to go to the parks, and those all need to be conjoined with all of our state and county services. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. We’ll now go to our mayoral candidate, Nora Slawick. Same question, one million-dollar grant, what would you do with it and why?
Thank you, Linda. You know, as I’m out there talking to people door-to-door, boy, are they happy with this council. You know, over and over, I hear, “We want to keep you. We do not want to go back to where it was in 2008. We like this council, and we love the work that you’re doing.” So I would split it like this. I’d give a little bit to a couple of different things. Streets is the number-one thing we hear about out there, and I would use it to accelerate plans for the streets, so that we get more streets done. There are people that look outside, see the potholes, and say, “Where am I on the list?” And you know, it’s like 2020, 2022, so I would accelerate that. I would do some community building, like Nikki. I would work to bring us together around the community building around Rice Larpenter and around economic development and the Maplewood Mall, and what can we do, and how can we be creative? And we could bring apartments into where Sears is, or we could bring Century College into whole classes there, so to do some economic development. I would look at seniors as well. You know, there’s a big article, I’m sure you saw your monthly newsletter, about seniors and falls. We need to take that serious. We would give some of that money to help our seniors be as safe as they can, make sure they get the classes and the education they need not to fall. I’d also give a little bit to code enforcement, because as I’m out talking to people, they’re not necessarily as happy with some of our, you know, trucks being on lawns and all kinds of issues that we see out there, people not mowing their lawns, period, different things. So I’d get, I’d probably put a little bit more money into that. And then I think I’d put a little bit more money, which we’re headed towards, in the rental housing codes. You know, we have no codes about our rental housing, so I’d put some money towards getting an enforcement officer that can go out there. People would sign up, they’d agree to. They'd agree to what rental housing would look like, and we'd hold them to some kind of standards, because that's how our neighborhoods prosper. We want everybody to have equal opportunity to be good neighbors, and rental housing and code enforcement are some of the things that do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So for our next question, we'll start with Council candidate, Mary Lee Abrams. There are a number of questions here about Maplewood Mall. There's clearly concern about Maplewood Mall, and what options might be considered to deal with, with the changes at Maplewood Mall?
In my opening remarks, I talked about my number one priority is really looking at that mall area. We have to make sure that that mall succeeds. It's an important asset for our city, and as a council member, I think that we can be nimble. Certainly, we can't direct the mall ownership as to what they need to do, but as a council, we can certainly be responsive. Now, what we did do already is we retained the services of Perkins &amp; Will, which is an excellent consulting firm that is currently engaged in a North End study. We're getting an awful lot of citizen input. You can find information, if you would like to weigh in, on creative ideas for the Maplewood Mall on the city's website. We're going to be having a presentation coming up very soon from Perkins &amp; Will, and they are, I think, a very important first step. Now, I think we have to continue to engage our businesses, and this council certainly has done that. We routinely have BR&amp;E, which is Business Retention and Expansion Meetings with businesses in our cities in Maplewood, and we need to continue to do that. Now, in terms of retail and that whole mall area, I want to be creative. I want to think about this from a new perspective, because retail has changed. We all know that. And perhaps that's an area for a new theater. Perhaps it is a recreation venue, a college, maybe even a grocery store. I read in the paper today about Hy-Vee expanding. That might be the first two-story Hy-Vee store. I don't know. Housing, I think, would be, that would be a great place to have housing in the Maplewood Mall. And those are just some of the possible ideas. We have to be creative. We have to be flexible, because we really want to grow businesses there. Now, if you look around the mall, that certainly is booming between Aldi's and...
Thank you.
All the, excuse me, the number of other stores around there, it's booming.
Thank you very much. Next, again, Maplewood Mall and what to do about it, and we bring it to our next City Council candidate, Kevin Burgland.
Thank you, Linda. Maplewood Mall is the example of the failure and the complete negativity of the city, city council. They didn't see it coming. Rosedale Mall, of course, is a big success. Southdale's a big success. Ridge Dale's a big success. Success is all over. Maplewood Mall down in the dumps. I do know that this, this administration and council have tried economic development, and their big success out at the Maplewood Mall is Chick-fil-A. Okay? Well, if you're going to have jobs like Chick-fil-A out at the Maplewood Mall, you better, instead of giving corporate welfare to those companies, you maybe better consider giving, putting aside money for food shelves and freezers for food shelves, so that employers or the employees who work for these kind of companies actually have someplace to eat after they get their non-sustainable wages, which is apparently one of the big visions of this council. Not only that, is I know that to succeed in Maplewood, the solution is not the agenda, the goal of this current negative council, to increase fees, increase taxes, increase special assessment, make up new fees. That is another negative solution. And of course, they've just added a, they've added a big boast to your Excel bill. You'll notice that soon, and they plan on going up higher and higher. The next thing, Maplewood has to deal with reality and with their negative debt trap that they've created. Almost one, approximately one quarter or more, that's 25 cents out of every property tax dollar you pay now, goes to that, that debt trap. The debt trap leaves no opportunity for new programs. I bring the positive agenda. We can come in here and clean it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next City Council candidate, Nikki Villa Vicencio. Maplewood Mall, and how would you deal with it?
Well, I do agree that the Maplewood Mall is a huge opportunity, and opportunity is the thing that I look forward to the most. But what I would hope that we can strive for as a future City Council member is working with strong, small local businesses, or sometimes they're referred as micro businesses. And the reason why I care about those businesses so much is because I believe those are the businesses that invest in Maplewood the most. They're the ones that hire our young people, and they teach them work ethic. And, and those people, those young people, they leave the small businesses in Maplewood with that strong work ethic for the rest of their life. And we have small businesses in Maplewood that have been here for decades, 30, 40, 50 years. We, as a city in Maplewood, we need to bring, shine a light on those businesses and work with them to make a community that's not only workable for the businesses, but a livable community that all families want to walk around, right? Like, I don't want to go down the Maplewood area and think that I'm in Vegas. I want to look at more of a natural community that is connected to things and that makes sense.
Thank you very much. Next, our mayoral candidate, Nora Slawick, Maplewood Mall.
Thank you. In looking at the whole Maplewood Mall area, this council has really done excellent work. We have worked with Health East to bring the new 140,000 square foot building called the Health East Clinic and Specialty Center. You might have seen it over by St. John's. That is employing, hundreds of people are in there being employed and giving back to our economy. I was out talking with neighbors, and they said, "I can get all my medical services right in two blocks away. This is fantastic." They love it. We have the new Alzheimer's unit coming. People are saying, "What's that on Beam going up?" We have a new AT&amp;C store. We have thing after thing after thing that has come while this council has been working together. For the mall, we're working hard. If you've been over there, it's a concern. And I know many of you have said to me, "I go to Maplewood Mall, and every time I go, there's another store closed," right? So we are working with the mall. We are working to re-envision it. As Councilmember Abrams and Juneman said, we are working on creative ideas, and I think it's going to take some time, so you can't solve this in a month or two. It's probably going to be in the next year. But there's a lot of interest on how to change the Maplewood Mall and how to change it for the better of our community. And so I'm convinced we can do that. We have the transit center that's there. We have the rush line that's going to come up. All the way from St. Paul, it's going to come up to the Transit Center at Maplewood Mall. That brings in people that can work there, that can go to the medical appointments. So we know people are interested in the area. It's just planning strategically, and this council is set up to do that with Will and Perkins and the direction we're going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathleen Juneman, finally, Maplewood Mall.
Thank you. Yeah. Kathleen Juneman, finally, is there some kind of a message there? As everyone before me has said, Maplewood Mall is a concern and a worry, but it's also an opportunity. And we have already started, as Nora implied, with the Perkins &amp; Will people helping us to envision, and these people are extremely creative. I worked on the Rice Larpenter process with them, and it's incredible what they can help you envision. And there are a lot of things that can happen, and the thriving businesses around the mall tells you that the area is alive. It's just that mall concepts are fading, and so you have to be a little more creative. We've talked about the possibility of housing. We've talked about a farmer's market. We've talked about, as already been mentioned, a grocery store. When Aldi's went in across White Bear Avenue, I don't know how many people from Legacy Village said to me, "Finally, somewhere to buy food." Otherwise, they have to go get in their cars to go to a grocery store. Other than that, they can walk to just about anything. I do think that the educational component is probably a strong possibility, because we have all the health facilities to the west, and those people need training. So we've, in the past, we've had a relationship with Century College. Who knows what they might see as an opportunity there? Someone brought up, I believe it was Southdale. Well, Southdale is anything but falling apart. It went down, and then it came back up, because they revisioned. They reconstituted themselves. It's a whole new experience. If you haven't been to Southdale since that happened, you can see what can happen. It's no longer a mall situation. It's a new concept that we all have to grab onto, and as was mentioned before, we're inviting your ideas. Go on our website and find it. Give us what you think should go there. No ideas, as used to say, no question is stupid. Well, no idea, no idea is too out there. We're looking for vision.
Thank you very much. Our next question, we'll go to City Council candidate, Kevin Burgland. How do you feel about the transportation options that are currently available in the city of Maplewood? Are there enough options? And if not, what would you do to increase the transportation options for the citizens?
Thank you, Linda. As a lifelong resident, I know Maplewood. I grew up in Maplewood. I may, I have the Maplewood beat for a long-running and significant news program, which will report on Maplewood's policies and administration. At times in my life as a bus rider, I keep an eye on the bus department and listen to bus riders, and all I hear is the word "poor," another negative aspect that the Maplewood Council and its administration has neglected. But of course, the Maplewood Council, or the Maple administration, has become less and less professional, year by year, and more just filled with political operatives. Now, I know that some solutions of transportation is that we should bulldoze and clear-cut an ecological trail called the Vento Trail that runs through to the heart of Gladstone, remove the canopy, put up a cyclone fence, and allow, eliminating the wildlife, the ecological wildlife corridors, for a, I think, probably a half-billion to billion-dollar project with hundreds of tons of concrete. And this is their big solution, one of the chief things the current council and administration is working on. Instead of working on the real issues of Maplewood, the swamp in Maplewood, trying to encourage a better community standard for better health care at St. John's Hospital, we, they are working on another white elephant, which is going to be a huge debacle, a line running through all our residents' backyards. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the issue is transportation and options, and what can we do if we don't have enough? And here we go to City Council candidate, Nikki Villa Vicencio.
Well, first, I'd like to say that I think I would disagree with almost everything he just said, but I, I am a bus rider. I have been a public transit rider all my life. I am dependent on it, and the reason I said what I said is because Maplewood isn't a poor in the transit community. For paratransit, it's one of the top cities, and I was the vice chair of the Transportation Accessibility Advisory Committee under the Metropolitan Council. Sat on that committee for many years, so I feel that I know public transit very well. And I feel like as a future Maplewood City Council member, I will be a great asset to advise on those issues, because I know it from the very minute aspect of it to the very large. I'm looking forward to the, the transportation systems. I am eager to know more of the details on them. I think that, what I guess I would have to say about the public transit system in Maplewood is that it's, it's like what I was talking about before. We need our community to be connected. And so in order for our community to work for everyone, we need to have a public transit system that everyone can use, everyone can access, and that it's safe. Those are the issues that I'm concerned with, and those are the issues that, that I will always fight for, for Minnesota as a whole.
Thank you very much. So transportation is on the table. Our mayoral candidate, Nora Slawick.
Transportation is really an important issue, and it particularly is important in Maplewood. It's about the accessibility, about the affordability, and we all know it's about millennials, right? They don't want to drive their cars everywhere. They want to live somewhere where they can hop on Light Rail or a Bus Rapid Transit and get to places in our city. We are very fortunate, you know, I'm part of Minnesota Mayors Together through the League of Minnesota Cities, as well as the Regional Council of Mayors, and mayors talk a lot about transportation. And when they hear that we have two transit lines, they're jealous in a lot of ways. You know, we're going to have one that is going to go from St. Paul to Woodbury, and we're going to have a stop in Maplewood on the 3M campus. So we'll have a stop right there, and people can go to jobs there. It should be very attractive for millennials in our area, as well as people living in that area to go downtown and get all around the Twin Cities. Also, that's the Gold Line, and then we have the Rush Line, which is going to have five stops in Maplewood. Again, is already attracting transit-oriented development. We have senior market-rate housing going up at the corner of Frost and English. That would not happen without transportation going through there. It's about those stops that are going to go through there, and the investors that want to come to Maplewood, that are talking with our council, that are attracted to what we're doing, that want to invest. And we've seen two housing projects come to play there. Again, market rate for the senior one. I think transportation is just a huge issue. We talk about driverless cars and all the things that could happen in the future, and you know, we have a city here and a city council that's on the forefront of this. So hang on, let us know what you think and where we're going with it, but I think we're going in a super positive direction, and the Rush Line is likely to be called the Purple Line. So we'll have the Purple Line right here in Maplewood. That's exciting.
Thank you very much. So next, City Council candidate, Kathleen Juneman, transportation.
Thank you. You know, it's tough to be at the end of the line on a question like this, so I'll just repeat some things, but we are in a good position, both for a change geographically and from the sense of a dedication to transportation. I presume some of you in the room may remember the Nest Bus, the local bus service that we tried to have for a while, and it just became unmanageable economically, but that was an attempt to pull people into the community, then out to appointments and that type of thing. And we've gotten, we've outgrown those things. And so what we're looking at now is a much broader picture, and we're looking at, as she said, we're blessed with two mass transit lines that are going to service different parts of our city, actually. And there are people moving into Legacy Village over here, and also into the new Gladstone area, because they know we're going to get the mass transit. There are people who just don't want to drive their cars downtown. Gee, I wonder why. Or people who work in Minneapolis who want to be able to take the Bus Rapid Transit downtown, get on the green line and go to Minneapolis. This is a dream for a lot of people. That's probably why we have Conifer Ridge that came to be. I'm sure, I can guarantee you, it's why the new senior apartments in Gladstone that the mayor referred to changed from 70 units of subsidized to 107 units of market value, because the developer knew he could attract people to live there. It's all about what we have to offer, and we have been more than supportive of mass transit. We've been seeking after it. There was an open house two weeks ago up at the library, and there were a number of you there, a number of citizens there. This is just the beginning. But you can see there what the plan is, who it's going to service, and how it's going to improve moving in, in our community, within our community, and out of our community to work.
Thank you. And Mary Lee Abrams, City Council candidate, transportation in Maplewood.
Thank you. This really is an exciting time to be on the council, because we do have these great transportation opportunities that are just right there on the edge of happening. Quite frankly, we can't build enough roads in the metro area to service all of the transportation needs that we have today and for the next 20 years. We just can't build enough roads. And so what we need to do is we need to be visionary. We need to have a vision on what our city should look like in 20 years. And the way that that's going to happen is with mass transportation. We're very fortunate, as the mayor indicated, with the Gold Line, and hopefully it's going to be the Purple Line, because then it will be Maplewood Vikings Lines. I kind of thought about that, but... be Maplewood Vikings Lines. I kind of thought about that. But it's a really exciting opportunity that we would have two lines coming through our city. We need to be able to think about how are we going to move people around to get them to jobs, to get them to, to medical appointments, to get them to their homes. And we can see it already. We can see it happening. That's why it's such an exciting time. With the whole Gladstone-Frost-English area, what's happening there, it's all based on the anticipation of transportation coming through there. We need to be able to get people moving, and it can't just be by building more roads, because we can't do that. We don't have any more space. And so what we need to do is we need to think creatively. On Labor Day, I had the wonderful opportunity to go down to the Saints' Games with my two sons. And it was wonderful to see the light rail system that they have down in downtown St. Paul. Well, we're not talking about light rail coming out this way. We're talking about something a little bit different. We're talking about BRT, Bus Rapid Transit. It still is a means of moving people, and I watched it sitting there down outside of the stadium, and I watched people getting onto the, the light rail, and it was amazing to see. I'm excited to watch what happens in Maplewood.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So, for our next question, we will, we will start with Nikki Villa-Vicencio, our city council candidate. And it's probably no surprise to any of us here that we live in Minnesota. Minnesota is tough on our infrastructure. So what would you, how would you prioritize Maplewood's infrastructure needs?
Well, we've talked a lot about the streets. Obviously, the streets are the first priority, making sure that they're, they're, they're safe and available for people to drive on without ruining their cars. Obviously, that's an important thing. I think that the access to the, the community from the, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question one more time?
So, how, the priority for infrastructure needs in Maplewood?
Well, the, I believe that the, we need to work, as we've talked about, like the mall and all the areas around that, is the economic development. I think we need to work on that infrastructure and making sure that, that that works for Maplewood, and, and it doesn't increase the taxes of our residents too much. And, and I believe that I would need to also speak to many of the other people in Maplewood, like I talked about, the seniors that will, that I can tap into for all their wisdom.
Thank you very much. Mayoral candidate Nora Slawick, if you could talk about the priorities for infrastructure in Maplewood?
So, infrastructure is always interesting because it's something we all don't really want to think about or like to think about, but it's, if we don't do it well, it can really hurt a city or a jurisdiction. You know, when you think about infrastructure like streets, this is one of the really stellar opportunities and what Maplewood has done so well on, in working with our partners, our neighboring suburbs, and the county. So we have a lot of county roads. We recently had MINDOC come in and give us a presentation on what's going to happen on 36. Is Century going to be able to go through, right? Is Hadley going to go through? When is that going to happen? And that affects our residents. If you've gone out 36 to go over the new bridge, you know it gets really backed up there. So we are planning now for how do you get the roads moving. By the way, Hadley will go first, and Century isn't even on the radar screen yet. So it's going to be a little while. We also are working all the time on these street projects with our neighborhoods and talking to our neighborhoods about our living streets. Maplewood has done a lot of innovation in terms of putting sidewalks on the streets. I was asked today, you know, when is the sidewalk going to go in by Edgerton School? When are you guys going to do that? The, to residents, it makes a big difference if we can do infrastructure well, and that does include our sidewalks, our safe-to-school routes, our relationships with the county, our relationship with our surrounding suburbs, and also with our parks. As you know, we have a lot of Ramsey County parks, and that's infrastructure in terms of when something happens at the Tulu Courts, is Ramsey County going to take care of it, or is Maplewood going to take care of it? Well, it's a Ramsey County park. So we have to have those talks about who is going to do what for the infrastructure and make sure we're cost-sharing well. And that's something we want to make sure we're doing well, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, city council candidate Kathleen Juniman, if you would talk about priorities for infrastructure?
Well, as has been referred to already numerous times, roads, roads, and more roads. We hear about it a lot. There's nothing more exciting than like when you hear, on a scale of one to 100, this street comes in at 34. Oh, boy. Needs doing. Unfortunately, we do have several that are falling into that category, but they have been prioritized in the past. We have done a number of projects actually in the past. When the economy was stronger, we did more than one project a year. Now we are having to be more cautious about that. But we do it in, in order of need. And I know everybody thinks their street is the worst, but if you want to know what the worst ones are, you can call our Public Works Department, and they'll give you some 33 and 34 rated streets, and you can go drive down there, and then yours won't look so bad. And there's also, besides the road itself, underneath the infrastructure, we have to deal with aging sewer pipes, aging gas lines, aging water lines. That's a trip. It used to be that the Water Department didn't want anything to do with that when we did a road project. Well, we've twisted their arms now, and they figure it might be a good idea when you're doing a road project to come in and replace the water main first, rather than dig up the new street six months later. There's a lot to be done, and the list will be never-ending. But we are moving it along as rapidly as we can. The infrastructure also involves connectivity of sidewalks. And our policy has been in the past to put in sidewalk where it appears necessary. That problem there is the description of necessary. What we're doing now on any major road project is trying to put a sidewalk or trail on one side of an arterial street, if you're going to the nature center, a park, school, whatever. And then, where there are bits of sidewalks when we do a road project, we actually try to connect what's left. And then, from an accessibility standpoint, when we do a road project now, if there's a park in the neighborhood or a school in the neighborhood, we actually go in and engineer curb cuts so that people that need the accessibility get it. And we do it at that time to be more efficient.
Thank you. So, city council candidate Mary Lee Abrams, if you would talk about priorities for infrastructure for Maplewood?
My colleagues are correct. We do spend quite a bit of time talking about roads. A lot of people still ask, how is it that our roads have gotten so bad? And the answer really is two-part. The answer is that a number of years ago, when roads were being rehabbed, that we got some, like many cities, the state was using a road mixture that didn't have quite enough oil. They were trying to be very green, and so they reduced the oil mixture. And consequently, what happened with a lot of our asphalt is that it doesn't stand up to the second part, which is our weather. We know winter is coming. We know the freezing and the thawing, and it just really wreaks havoc on our roads. So we spend quite a bit of time on roads, trying to figure out what, how we can do more roads. That's why this council voted in favor of a franchise fee, so that we could approach more road repair and kind of get ahead of the game. We have definitely a plan. Our, our council has focused on what needs work the most. We do the same thing in terms of our playgrounds. The playgrounds that need the most repair, they have all been evaluated by staff in terms of safety and looking at fixing those playgrounds and replacing those playgrounds that are the oldest, that are the least safe, and addressing those. But there's one other point about infrastructure that I think is really important, that is unique to the council that we have right now. And what we did as a council is that we went and we have put in place an asset management plan, so that we know every asset, the buildings, the roofs, the boilers, all sorts of pieces of, of equipment that we have in the city, we have had all of those evaluated. And it's all in a computer system, so that we know that just exactly what equipment needs to be replaced. When does the filter over at the pool need to be replaced? The roof over at the community center, the roof on our city building here. We have spent time looking at that infrastructure, and we have an asset management plan to help us manage that effectively and economically.
Thank you. And finally, but last on this round of questions, Kevin Burgland, a city council candidate, how would you prioritize the infrastructure needs of Maplewood?
Thanks, Lynda. Infrastructure. Here we go again. Listen to the, the council. The only possible solution is more new fees, more taxes, higher special assessments. You look at what the current council administration did for infrastructure, their top priority is they closed down the Maplewood Community Center and gave it for free to the YMCA. And then, wow, we don't have a space for parking wreck? Their top vision, their top agenda item is to build a new community center down at Wakefield after a boondoggle from 1995. Now, that's all the negative solutions. My positive solution is, my top priority is to realize there's many seniors, and there's people who are disabled in this community, and we need to look at the trails and roads and routes and all the impediments for people in wheelchair who have limited mobility. This council has ignored it. It's time to take that, that is low-cost, and get curb cuts, places that people can go through, and not just at the end of sidewalks. Of course, roads are a top priority. Your current council, what did they do? They, the courts brought down through pressure the special assessment for Little Ramblers to a special assessment of $3,800, after it being approximately $8,000. Now they're back up to $6,600. And they still want more, and they're failing, even by their own admission with their road projects. And you know what? The ones they do, they're not repairing them. They're not seal coating them. You know, Maplewood has its own road department where they can put what they call a Band-Aid and come in there and mill an overlay and make it as, a brand-new. And there's no special assessment that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, I think we need a little change of pace, don't you? So I think we're going to, we're going to reverse the direction. It's good for us. Follow somebody else. So we're going to start with the next question with Nikki Villa-Vicencio, and we're going to give them one minute each for the next two questions. Make sure our timers are ready to go. So the first of these one-minute questions, I'd like you each to give our listening audience two strengths that you would bring to the office if elected. And we'll start with you, city council candidate Nikki Villa-Vicencio.
Well, as a future Maplewood City Council member, I will be committed to diversity in honoring the diversity of all of Maplewood, whether that's north or south, or young or old, or families. I have done a lot of work in intergenerational organizing with many labor movements. And I think that's a big aspect that I bring to the community. And, you know, I don't think you should underestimate the voice of the unheard. So I think that's what I bring to the city council, is that I'm a person who has a perspective that has never been heard at the city council.
Thank you very much. Kevin Burgland, can you tell us two strengths that you would bring to the city council if elected?
Thank you, Lynda. Yes. And of course, likewise, welcoming, respective attention to diversity of, diversity of cultures, diversity of mobility, diversity of ideas is the number-one priority. This, we're not hearing from anybody. We're not having public presentation. We're not having city, citizens' input. That is the current administration's, their mantra and their action. Things which bring, the other thing I would bring is I would throw back the curtains and no more of this eating dinner before the city council with top administrators and the current council chewing over the ideas, chewing over what's going to go on before they come out here to talk about the real issues. Openness, positivity, diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lee Abrams, city council candidate, what two strengths would you bring to the council if elected?
The first one that comes to mind is problem-solving. I've been a practicing attorney for over 30 years. And as a practicing attorney, I am engaged in problem-solving every day. And I have to tell you that sitting up here at the D S, we have the responsibility to solve a lot of problems creatively, within budget, how to do the best that we possibly can for our residents. And so I think problem-solving is something that is important. I know I have to do my homework whenever we get our council packets, lots and lots of meetings, and it really requires problem-solving. The other thing I bring is passion. I am passionate about our city. I want the very best for our residents. I want the very best for our businesses. I want to make sure that the decisions that we make as a council really help propel our city forward into the future in the best direction that we possibly can be headed. And so I think problem-solving and passion.
Thank you very much. Kathleen Juniman, city council candidate, what two strengths would you bring to the council if elected?
Well, as the senior member, I may as well get it out, that a historic perspective is, resides in this chair. I've lived here most of my life, and I've gone through all of the, shall we say, high moments and evolutionary points in Maplewood history firsthand. My father was on this council in the 60s. I saw it being put together, and now I have to try and help keep it together. And I do believe that the historic perspective often gives us some vision of where people came from and how we got where we are now and how to keep it this way. And the other thing I think I bring is a very broad breadth of experience and knowledge, based on my advocacy for residents. Long before I was on the council, I was a community activist for 21 years. And also, the knowledge I've gained by sitting in the chair up here. You get a lot of people's input and perspective over time that helps you build a new thought process for yourself.
Thank you. And our mayoral candidate Nora Slawick, what two strengths would you bring to the city council chambers?
Thank you. My biggest strength is vision. You know, I'm the one that suggested that the MCC partnered with the YMCA, we were losing a half a million dollars a year on taxpayer money, and now we're in the black. And it was a negotiated deal with, with agreement after agreement after agreement on how much they were going to give and how much we were going to give. We were visionary about the market-rate senior apartments. We're visionary about the transit programs. We're visionary about pulling out of the Cable Commission, which is a dinosaur now. We have YouTube and all kinds of other ways to communicate. My second one would be credibility. I was a legislator for seven terms. I chaired a finance committee in the legislature. I work as a project manager and have worked in the past as one. And I keep results, and I keep the residents in focus. Credibility, I'm a resident, too. So I care what happens as much as you do.
Thank you very much. So we're still on our second of our one-minute lightning round questions. And so this, we'll start with city council candidate Kevin Burgland. What is your favorite, I love this question, so I'm sorry I have to ask it, what is your favorite part about living in Maplewood? And you have, we'll each have a minute for this question.
Thank you, Lynda. I think one of the big amenities in Maplewood, one of the principal things that entice families to Maplewood, people with good incomes to Maplewood, to try to bring positive change to the incredible damage that has occurred here for many years. The damage, I think that when, one of the members got on many, many years ago, I think a news program called it Dysfunctional Maplewood, and I think the council member was actually pictured on city pages in 2006, holding a hand grenade. I think trails are the biggest important amenity which has wildlife and have, connects the chain of lakes, things that are really important. And of course, the big vision of this current council is to bulldoze that for a half-billion dollars or more, and tell everybody that's a wonderful improvement for a bus line, which is just the same speed as a current bus line to the mall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lee Abrams, what is your favorite part about living in Maplewood?
You know, Maplewood is a really special place. I don't know how many other cities can boast that they have their own hospital, that they have their own Fortune 500 company here, that they have their own mall, that we have 36 parks and 15 preserves, over 930 acres of parks in our city, and all of those trails. Those are all fabulous amenities. But I would say the favorite thing about living in Maplewood, it's the people. It's the residents. It's my neighbors. It's my family. That's really, I think, my favorite part about living in Maplewood. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathleen Juniman, your favorite, in one minute, your favorite part about living in Maplewood?
My favorite part of living here is that this is not an ordinary 60-year-old suburb. We are a progressive city that's on the move. We care about what's to come. We acknowledge what has gone in the past, and it makes us a complete picture. It's why people are attracted here. People are attracted by our environment. People are attracted by our environmental policies, they're attracted by our parks, they're attracted by the fact that they do have a say if they care to come and participate or get online and participate. We're not just sitting still, we're not just some city outside of St. Paul. As a matter of fact, I think the people in St. Paul are probably a little jealous of the people who live in Maplewood.
Thank you. Nora Slawick, your favorite part about living in Maplewood?
Well, I love living in Maplewood and I would say, as others have said, it is the people, definitely. You know, I've been out talking to hundreds and hundreds of people this summer and I'll tell you to a T, they love living here, whether it's the parks and trails, the lakes, the convenience to 36 and 94 and shopping, whether it's the Progressive Council. I mean, people really appreciate Maplewood and like living here. So, my favorite part is the people. We've had so much community engagement, we've done the Kid City Project, we've done the Laugh-In Day, we've done the big park events, and people come to those and they say, wow, right, 700 hot dogs, I think, at our last event. Wow, Maplewood is a wonderful place to be.
Thank you. And Nikki Villa-Vicencio, our City Council Candidate, what is your favorite part about living in Maplewood?
Well, I'd love to tell the story about what I told at the last legislative session to Senator Uyghur is, my favorite thing is when I'm riding on the bus from the grocery store with my daughter and I've got groceries on the back of my wheelchair, I love to get off the bus and jump onto one of our trails. And the cool thing about our trails is we have state, county, and local trails in Maplewood. So, that's why I think trails are my favorite thing in Maplewood. And that's what drew me to first be on the 20-year Master Parks Plan and then in 2014 was on the Parks and Recs Commission, is just that trails. And that's what I hope to bring to Maplewood is that regional leadership of connecting our state legislature and our county and our local governments.
Thank you very much. So, we'll go back to two minutes, make sure our timers are ready, and we will start this next question with Mary Lee Abrams, City Council Candidate. So, there are two school districts in Maplewood and how would you, how could the Maplewood City Council increase partnerships with your school districts?
I think we already are partnering with our school districts. The council has invited both superintendents from 622 and 623 to come and talk to the council, myself. I sat down with our superintendent from North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District at a BRNE meeting with her. Once again, that's the Business Retention and Expansion. We sat down and it was myself as a member of the council, some folks from the Planning Commission, and someone from the Chamber of Commerce sat down with her to talk about how can we partner better with the school district. And I'm excited to say that she's going to be coming to a council meeting very soon and we are going to be exploring more ways that we can partner. We sure have two great school districts that are doing some amazing things with our kids and I'm excited to see how we might work better with them. I know that, I'm looking forward to the opportunity, so stay tuned because the, both superintendents will be coming in the fall and talking about what's happening in their school districts and how we can work better together with them.
Thank you. City Council Candidate Kathleen Juniman, how can Maplewood City Council better partner or increase its partnerships, I guess I should say, with the school districts in Maplewood?
Well, first of all, the fact that we have brought it out into the light, there are two districts in Maplewood. Everybody thinks because there's a North St. Paul Maplewood Oakdale School District that that's the end of the line. For everyone who lives west of Keller Parkway, it happens to be the Roseville School District where we happen to live. And both districts have their strengths, both have a different focus and many times, and to be able to communicate with those people is wonderful. Both superintendents have come in the past and are going to come again later this fall to speak to us about what's going on in their districts. I know the districts have reached out to our city management and have quarterly meetings with the management to let them know what's going on and what their needs are. And I was also privileged to serve on two different committees for the Roseville School District as an elected official from Maplewood. Sometimes they kind of forget too that Maplewood's in the Roseville area school district, so they need a reminder. But I did serve on the School Facilities Committee and then I also served on their last committee for their last bond issue. So, we are involved, very involved, and they are stepping forward to become more involved. They see us wanting them here and they're more than willing to come.
Thank you very much. Nora Slawick, Mayor candidate, how would you increase partnerships with the two school districts in Maplewood?
You know, the school districts is really an important relationship for us. I'll always remember the superintendent of 622 had us in with Realtors to talk with Realtors about how important it is that the school district sells a lot of people on where to move and that if our school districts aren't strong, Maplewood does not do as well, right? So, we have a very interlinked relationship that we really need to think about helping each other do well. Some of the ways we could partner better is, of course, with the police, we have our police liaisons. I know we're doing a lot of things. We do a bike giveaway to kids in the Roseville schools. I know that was with Mary Lee along with the BRNE visit and they're doing a lot of innovation in the 622 schools. The biggest place I probably think is increased partnership would be working on the achievement gap. Have you been looking at the headlines the last week or two? We are not making it in Minnesota, we are not reducing that achievement gap. And I think, again, we're interlinked, the cities, we have the residents, and the schools are educating the kids, and how can we close that gap? One of the ways specifically, they're finding with some of the African-American attendance in schools, they're missing as many as 26 days of school. You know, maybe the police could partner or our community service officers could partner with stopping by the home, seeing what's happening, digging into that a little bit about what's happening. Because, you know, when we all, as this very famous Minnesota politician used to say, we all do better when we all do better. So, when school districts do better, the city does better and same back and forth.
Thank you. Nikki Villa-Vicencio, again, how would you foresee increasing partnerships with the two school districts in Maplewood?
Well, some of the work that I have done with the school districts thus so far has been some of my most fun work. I have the privilege of being a Kid City Ambassador through the Maplewood Parks and Recs Commission, and I've gotten to know some of the principals and teachers through Kid City when we plan our events and I hear their concerns that they have in our schools. And so, I think, you know, one of the first things that I would like to do is just to meet with more of the principals and hear what their concerns are and what they like about being in Maplewood as a school district. And then also partnering with them to have children clean up the parks and do fun things like that. But, you know, last year I did this long training, it was like a leader-in-me training with 622, and it was really great to listen to the other parents as well and hear what their concerns are with the school and the school district and connecting those two things. And before my daughter was in public school system, she was a recipient of Head Start and I was the parent president of Head Start. And that is also in Maplewood. And reaching out to them is important because they're also an important asset as they serve usually people with, they serve children with disabilities and lower on the economic scale of Maplewood, so it's important to hear their concerns the most. So, I, again, would just say that partnering with the principals and hearing what their concerns are and listening to the people who work at the 620 School District over by North High School, I don't think a lot of people even realize where their office is, but you can go in there and talk to them, they're usually eager to talk to people.
Thank you very much. Kevin Burgland, how would you increase the city's partnerships with the two school districts in Maplewood?
Thank you, Lynda. And I know this, going back to the record, what's in evidence of the current council, one of the first things they did, because they have just not been good partners, not been good neighbors, as they were with the Ramsey-Washington Cable Commission, first thing they did, of course, they eliminated their. The school districts counted on that partnership and they threw it out. Is that a good partnership? I know the extent of their real, true, authentic desire to work with the professional educators in the district is small. They talk about having a laugh-in. You know what? They can't even get the board meeting of the Roseville School District on their cable. They can't keep up their agreement up-to-date with the education or the Edgerton Maplewood Community Center. You know what happened when you enter in with a partnership like Maplewood? The education department, which is extremely important, you're dealing with professionals and educators, when you come to Maplewood, you're dealing with political operatives. Maplewood has to focus on their debt bond, their low bond rating, and their pledge to Wall Street, they're going to just continue to up fees and taxes just to make them satisfied. You know what? When they pulled out of that Ramsey-Washington Cable Commission, they not only hurt Maplewood, they took community access. That would be kids in their sporting events, kids in their schools plays, away from everybody, not only in Maplewood where parents can't watch that, but everyone in the 12 other cities, including Badness Heights, North St. Paul, Lake Elmo, Oakdale. I mean, the survey says, Maplewood's own survey, people don't trust them, residents don't trust them.
Thank you very much. So, we are, this is probably, we're getting close to kind of our last questions. And so, I have a lot of questions on the same kind of general topic and I think I'm going to ask it not the way these are stated, but a slightly different way. And we will be starting on this question with Kathleen Juniman, City Council Candidate. How do you walk the balance between representing your constituents and providing leadership? You personally?
Well, first of all, as a resident, I think I have at least a basic knowledge of what the people who live here need, since I am one. But you hear from a lot of people about a lot of things and there's no lack of communication from people, so you do hear from the residents, but you're elected to represent them, so that's what your job is. Your style of leadership varies with the person. Mine happens to be direct, as most people will tell you. And I like to think of myself as someone who puts a puzzle together. To me, that's leadership. You take the things that are put in front of you, an average project, you get staff report, you get neighbors' input, people call you, you go out and visit, you take all those pieces, you come to the table and five people have to move those pieces around to put them together to make it work. And to me, that's leadership. You make it work. Leadership is not about, look at me. Leadership is how do we, as five leaders, put things together to make life work for the residents who live here?
Thank you. We will now go to Mayor candidate Nora Slawick. How will you and do you navigate the balance between representing your constituents and providing leadership?
I think that's an interesting question. I'm not sure who put that forward, but it is, it can be difficult. I will tell you, when I walked, as I'm walking the neighborhoods, I am hearing about these unique situations, particularly with code enforcement, rental housing, all kinds of things that we don't necessarily hear right up here at the dais. And so, one thing is walking leadership, you know, is with my constituents, with the residents, is bringing those concerns to staff and saying, you need to address these situations. Usually, they're in the pipeline somewhere, but it's making sure we have to be a responsive city, we have to respond to people. And so, one thing is making sure that people feel heard and that is, that can be a challenge. And that's where the leadership part comes in, is working with other council members and staff to talk about what's the right direction to do in these things. Hence, why we're headed towards rental housing policy, why we're headed towards more code enforcement, maybe we're going to do twice-a-year sweeps, things like that, because we need to get out there and get on top of this. We want to continue to be proud of our community. So, for me, it's something I really think about, but I think about, I'm a resident too, so I want to make sure they're represented. And a lot of times, we work again in partnership with the staff and moving that forward. And then, we are responsible for the bigger ideas. I think that debt reduction has been one of the really important things that the council has done and it's constantly, is that affect maybe, are all of you thinking about debt reduction? Probably not every day in the city realm, but to us, you know that's saving you millions of dollars, the way we've reorganized? I mean, a very mundane topic, but definitely has your pocketbooks in mind. So, it's doing that both on a visible and a behind-the-scenes manner.
Thank you. City Council Candidate Nikki Villa-Vicencio, how will you navigate the line between representing your constituents and providing leadership?
Well, my leadership style is very just organize, organize, organize. And obviously, I'm in campaign mode right now and organizing in campaigns is a lot different. But in issues, my leadership skills are around just focusing, bringing people on common ground and allowing them to be the voice of that issue. And then, as me, as a future leader, would be the person to support them. That's how I think good leadership is. I believe that, you know, as I grow as a leader, that institutional knowledge will come forward, but I think that's where leaders have vision and constituents are there to tell us what their issues are because they're not the leaders. And so, it's us to have the vision and to take their issue and put it into our vision. And that's what I hope to do as a Maplewood City Council member.
Thank you. Next is Kevin Burgland, City Council Candidate. How will you navigate the balance between representing your constituents and providing leadership?
Thank you. Thank you, Lynda. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, what's in evidence is the negativity and failure of the leadership. Of course, we know that the fancy accounting Maplewood has created to try to hide the debt bomb has shifted that debt trap into other accounts that aren't counted in the long-term debt, including tax abatement bonds. The leadership that we've seen here at the City Hall, I think it was in November 2006, all the patrol officers of Maplewood, 56 of them sued the city of Maplewood. There's the leadership. What about the other thing, it just never ends? Coming up on Monday, they're planning on eliminating the Police Civil Service Commission, which was set up to stop political retaliation of police officers. Public safety is a number-one issue and they have failed, more negativity. Take what's going to happen on Monday also. You're going to send one of the members of the Maplewood Council out to the Trump White House to take a tour for, apparently, just reading the packet for approximately $1,000, yet they don't have $1,000 to give, to pay the staff at the Maplewood Historic Society, which the city is the landlord's over. The Maplewood Historical Society holds a lease for the Brew Trump farm. They put the volunteers in there and Maplewood can't find $1,000, $1,000 to compensate them for all the programming. You know their campaign newsletter that they always deliver every month? They have all kinds of events out at the Brew Trump Farm. And yet, with no problem, they find $1,000 to send one of the members of their council out to the Trump White House for a tour.
Thank you very much.
Leadership, right?
And finally, how will you, Mary Lee Abrams, as council member, navigate the balance between representing your constituents and providing leadership?
I'm a resident, just like all the rest of the candidates here. And as a resident of Maplewood and as a City Council Member in Maplewood, I try to shop locally, I use local businesses. I can't go to I can't go to Costco, and we all love to go to Costco, but I can't go to Costco without running into someone that wants to engage in some kind of conversation. My style is to get a lot of information, a lot of input, to talk to people, to really listen to what they have to say, and then translate that into some type of action step. Perfect example, last council meeting, we were talking about our levy for 2019 and what we're going to do. And what I've been hearing by phone calls and talks with my neighbors, talks with people out as I'm out and about in our city, is a concern for an increase in our, in our 2019 levy. And the reason that people are expressing their concern is because of something a little, it's unrelated, but it is related, because it all relates to our pocketbooks. Our state legislature did not align our income tax with the federal income tax changes. And so, we're all kind of hanging out there for our 2019 taxes, and we don't know what's going to happen. And I've had a number of people who have expressed to me that they're very concerned. They don't know how this is going to impact on their families. And so what I did was I listened to what everyone was telling me, and I brought that to the council. And I'm trying to keep our levy increase lower than what staff is recommending, because there is this financial uncertainty out there with many of our residents. That's how I translate the, what I'm hearing from the constituents into an action step. And I bring that to the council. I represent everyone in the city of Maplewood. We don't have districts. We are citywide, and I am certainly out there listening to what residents say throughout our city.
Thank you very much. So I think as, I'm going to go back to the one-minute question, so make sure, make sure our time is ready. And, and I'm going to start this with mayoral candidate Nora Slawick.
Weren't we supposed to be, end at 8:30?
Yes, this is the last question, then we'll go to closing statements. So I, I thought, yeah, I know. Would you, should we not do the last question? We can just go to closing statements. That's fine. Would you, would you guys, you guys tired? That's fine.
No, I'll throw as many questions as you.
Okay, well, I just have one, one short one. It's kind of a fun one, and it's kind of fun to end this way, so. And then we'll go to closing statements. So, one minute, Nora Slawick, what have you been reading lately?
What have I been reading lately? Well, I am a books, I, I listen more than, I'm, I'm an audible books. So I'm listening to, she's the 5-4-3-2-1, Mark knows all about this. Get up, you go 5-4-3-2-1, and you get up, and out you go, and you exercise, and you get off, and whoop! That's what I'm listening to. What is her name? We're going to have to remember what her name is. Mel. Yeah. So, so that's my biggest one that I listen to. I also, so for me, instead of books, it's more, it is more listening to, I do podcasts. I listen to a business podcast about marketing and about concepts in business. I listen to an Oprah podcast. And so I'm, I'm an Oprah fan, and it's all about faith, and how the world needs faith in their leaders, and leaders need faith. So for me, and I read variated magazines and council packets.
Thank you. Nikki Villa-Vicencio, what have you been reading lately?
Well, actually, I was trying to think about, the last book I read was probably Dora the Explorer, to be honest with you. But other than that, I read a lot of news. NPR News is a big fan of mine, and, yeah, I'd say a lot of online news is what I read.
Thank you. Kevin Bergland, what have you been reading lately?
Thank you, Linda. And of course, reading is the, is, is so wonderful, especially now with all these electronic devices where you can take them with all the time. And so, what am I reading? I know that my service in the council required to be on top of the events, trends, to know how other cities have succeeded. And it's so easy now to read, for example, The Economist, read The New Yorker, read The Wall Street Journal, read, just pull up a book and read part of that through the Ramsey County Library. So, the most important thing, of course, is that people do their homework, because you cannot count on what used to be professionals to give you accurate, full information up at Maplewood. It's your responsibility to do your homework and investigation, so you're prepared. You're prepared to serve the city, because, ladies and gentlemen...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mary Lee Abrams, what have you been reading lately?
Well, every day, I read the newspaper, but I'm currently reading a book. It's on the history of Israel, and it is a fascinating historical study of the country of Israel. And I'm also reading a book, I kind of perpetually read the book Lincoln on Leadership, because it, you can only really, I think, ingest maybe one chapter at a time and then process it. I really like leadership books, and that's the one that I am, continue to work on. I just read another chapter on it last week. So, those are my two.
Thank you. And Kathleen Juniman, what have you been reading lately?
Well, I belong to a book club, which really, whether you want it to or not, broadens your horizons. But my, my last choice led me to another book by the same author. Her name is Victoria Sweet, and she's an M.D., Ph.D. And she is basically trying to study, what, how in the world do we get into this bind we're in with healthcare? And so the first book was called God's Hotel, which is basically the last almshouse in San Francisco. And she worked there for 20 years. That's where she did her residency, and she worked there for 20 years. And then she wrote the one I just finished, Slow Medicine. And it has a significance, trust me. Her premise is, in our, in our haste to want to do everything so efficiently, we couldn't be any more inefficient in delivering healthcare.
Thank you. So we're now ready for our closing statements. We'll go in reverse order of our, of our opening statements, and we'll start with our city council candidates. And so, last becomes first. So our first city council candidate, Nikki Villa-Vicencio, if you would please give your closing statement, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for putting on this forum, and thank you for everyone who has been listening and being patient. My three missions as a candidate for Maplewood City Council is regional leadership, strong local businesses, and healthy families. Supporting local policies that invest in Maplewood families. My work as a community organizer has been intergenerational. As a city council member, I will use my skills to make sure we include the concerns of the senior community, along, along with young millennial families. We need Maple, Maplewood to be a walkable community for all people to use and enjoy, clean parks and public land, and a good relationship with the school district and the schools within Maplewood. As Maplewood further develops and increases its diversity, I will be mindful of how we further the economic development, mindful of the furthering the public transportation, and mindful of furthering infrastructure and how it affects the youngest people in our city to the oldest. And I promise, as a Maplewood City Council, I will engage Maplewood residents in meaningful ways. I'm committed to honoring the diversity of Maplewood, and I'm committed to removing the barriers for all people.
Thank you. Closing statement, City Council candidate Kevin Bergland, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Linda. And I think you can see from the current incumbents up here, the privileged entitlement attitude which has, is rotting City Hall and the good life in Maplewood. I'm, you know, I'm again asking for, not this phony transparency, and asking for the city, the City Hall to make, make the FBI findings of the FBI investigation into City Hall Administration Attorney Affairs public. They're still, after these years, hiding it. Of course, they rigged the system and have given themselves five years instead of four years. I do want to thank, with, with all due respect, the city of Maplewood for allowing this Meet the Candidate show on this, this community access, public access show to be, to be cable-cast and replayed. Of course, looking at the city of Maple's administration, you know, tonight, this show is, it's using this facility, I believe, for free, using the Maplewood Cable TV channel for free, using the camera equipment for free, supplying the cameras for fee, editing the show for free, promoting its broadcast on the internet for free, putting it up on the website for free, doing all kinds of things. And yet, for any other candidates for, any other issues by any other member in the Maplewood community, they don't, they can't do any of this. They've completely shut down any community access, any discussions of issues, and they say, "Our engagement is Twitter." As I said, NPR calls that a cesspool. What, what needs to be done is, there has to at least been a conversation, there has to be a conversation. They can't all just continue to put out their publicity, everything is wonderful, when their own survey says. It was just that they're unsure of crime, uneasy about education, and they don't trust them.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Our closing statement, City Council candidate Mary Lee Abrams, again, you have two minutes.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for this forum. It's an important opportunity for our citizens to be able to listen to candidates. I also want to thank the citizens of Maplewood for trusting me to serve you in my first term as a Maplewood City Council member. My job is not done yet, and I am excited to be running for reelection. When I first ran for Maplewood City Council, Maplewood was struggling to get away from a negative reputation and a lot of financial debt. I promised back then to help chart a new course for our community, and I believe that I have helped in doing just that. Maplewood has turned around and is now moving in the right direction. Since my time on the council, we have reduced our debt. When I started on the council, we were at $81 million, which was untenable. We have now reduced that debt down to $59 million. This amounts to a approximate $22 million reduction in our debt, paying off our debt in four and a half years. Not only have we significantly reduced our debt, but the council has insisted on approving a debt policy to serve as guardrails, so that we don't engage in that much debt in the future. We're also planning on reducing the debt further by another $10 million in the next 10 years. And you do that by responsible government, making good decisions and very thoughtful decisions. We partnered with the Y. That was a very good decision that we made while I was on the council, to stop the financial hemorrhaging that we were experiencing. The citizens of Maplewood were underwriting the, the community center by at least a half a million dollars. Previous councils had never looked at asset management, and they didn't make any plans for what happens when we need a new roof. This council made that decision, and we partnered with the Y, and we are now in the black. That was an excellent decision. We have made vast strides since I've been on the council, and I would like that opportunity again to serve another term. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our, the last of our four city council candidates, Kathleen Juniman, your closing statement, you have two minutes.
Thank you. We are in a good place in this city right now. I believe I have served you diligently and well, creatively and responsibly. We have good management, we have dedicated personnel and staff, a solid financial status, including an excellent bond rating, good goals for operational efficiency and environmental sustainability. We are leaders environmentally in the region. My priorities for this coming four years are continuous efforts to maintain financial, operational, and environmental sustainability, address diversity and economic stability through transit planning, upgrading infrastructure and development and redevelopment planning with thoughtful focus on business attraction and retention and housing rehab, and finally, supporting our staff, particularly in public safety, in working with our, for our common goals in the community, community outreach and inclusiveness, efficiency, and a safe and healthy community for all. It has been my privilege to be part of this great team, and I would truly like to continue. I have the history, experience, dedication, and energy, and the work ethic, I missed only one meeting in 17 years, to continue to serve.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the mayoral candidates. I am going to, in reverse order, therefore, read the closing statement of Margaret Behrens.
My leadership and experience have proven success that will enhance and accelerate our vision. I have 55 years of deep roots in our community. I served as a three-, four-year terms elected public servant to a Minnesota State office in their 30-year history of being in the red. In my first term, I brought them into the black financially. I have served on city commissions and task force panels. I'm qualified and prepared to serve as mayor. As a two-term president of the Ramsey County League of Local Governments, my experience and success are proven. I have created programs and created revenue generation initiatives. That created a substantial surplus. This, this and my years of leadership experience is a powerful foundation. As a Ramsey County-appointed member to the Low Cost Housing Committee and the Children's Services Citizens Review Panel for Human Services, gives me the added value to work with issues facing our community as our demographics evolve. My record of public service work has given, has proven positive results. I have a vision for a transparent and responsible government that is accountable and responsible to the taxpayers. Our government must be inclusive, welcome everybody to discuss and decide our future. I am very diligent in providing quality representation and protecting our personal and property rights in an efficient and effective manner, in prioritizing to grow a strong and vibrant community. The state of our city shows a need. I work to provide an equitable and reliable foundation for our children, families, and individuals, and our seniors, and the most vulnerable who are at risk. I will, I work to help all citizens achieve prosperity in our community. I have a lifetime of experience in working with all cultures and demographics. I work to ensure equality, security, and contentment for us all as a united community. I always work to eliminate racial and ethnic disparities across our systems, including employment, education, housing, justice, health, and human services. My network of partners and I have worked together effectively to build a healthy, sustainable environment, connecting families, aging adults, businesses, to opportunities that we need to help everyone succeed. I didn't quite finish. That is the closing statement of Margaret Behrens. We are now ready for our second mayoral candidate, Nora Slawick, for her closing statements. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Linda, and thank you to the League. And I do happen to know that the League had to pay fees this evening, so you might want to fact-check some of the things that you've heard here tonight. And I want to ask the people that have attended this forum, as well as those who have watched, as your current mayor, I'm humbly asking for your vote on November 6th. Of course, now, in this day and age, we can ask for it for November 6th and before November 6th. So I hope you'll get out and vote early and make sure you make your voice heard. I've worked very hard as your mayor to listen to our residents' concerns and to focus on our public safety, streets, economic development, and parks. I want to make sure we keep our great quality of life in Maplewood. I will continue to be responsive to residents and to help solve problems for you and our city. For the future, the things I want to work on, and I want to continue to work on with your support, and many of you have told me you're very happy with the direction of the city, I want to focus on economic development, including the business expansion and retention, with a focus on the redevelopment of the Gladstone area and adding more housing and retail to the Frost English Villages, as well as our North End Plan for Maplewood Mall, accelerating residential area road improvements, and prioritizing public safety needs, opening the new Wakefield Park amenities, featuring a new community building, athletic fields, and a picnic shelter, which will benefit the whole city, and implementing the Maplewood 2040 Comprehensive Plan focused on land use, housing, sustainability, parks, trails, open space, and transportation connections, and connections. So it's been great to talk with all of you here tonight and to be out in the neighborhoods. And I just want you to know, I really care about Maplewood, and I care about our future. And a vote for me will continue to make sure that Maplewood is prosperous. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to remind the audience that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and not those of the League of Women Voters, and sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement by the League for any candidate. I would like to thank the candidates and the live and TV audience. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I would like to acknowledge and thank the candidates, who are serving their community by their willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to just indicate that all of those of us timing and running this forum are volunteers, and that the League of Women Voters did in fact pay for production and AV services this evening. I would like to thank the audience here, who've taken time out of their busy days to attend the candidate forum, and those of you at home watching your candidates discuss issues that are important to your community. The forum will be aired in its entirety on your cable, Comcast Cable Channel 16, the Facebook web portal, and the city web portal. Please check those, those locations for air times. Every vote, as we've seen in the last few years, every vote does count. So this election day is Tuesday, November 6th. The polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., so we hope you'll take a friend and a neighbor and vote on Tuesday, November 6th. Thank you, and good night.